I don't have headphone today, so it's gonna be a little bit um the sound is gonna be a little bit smaller. A reaped what? What is reaped? Oh okay. Since this interface can use as a variable type. Oh where do you call method? Text message. Just make a Java class called ReadingList. Are usually readable, so they have said reading list class implement the readable. Okay, how did readable do I forgot yeah. What the hell? Oh it just it just read. Get to read. Wait where were we? No I forgot where were we? What? In boxes and items to pack in the box uh items must implement the following interface. Packable. New Java class just select new Java interface. Shut up I'm not on netbeans. Create classic book and C D which implement interface. The constructor uh just given the author named the book and weight of book. C D has a constructor. What do the weight do? Oh come on. Oh it is bean pop there. Oh it is bean string.
Tung dai chiu bai da kuei bu nha? Sa tao ni hap sa pai?
O K.
Hm. Goi ra kiem xeng.
Thu ba.
Hm. Ngoi ra mon gi na?
Ngoi ra thong kei dek.
Noi ja? Goi ra thong kei ngoi ra kiem xeng.
Thu bai.
Goi ra talt nai ha?
Thu sau.
Thu sau ha?
Von.
Thu sau la mi bo da?
Oh. packages class diagram. Hm yeah yeah co coi ha. Nari? Constr box. What the hell? Across the box. This is our end class. Implement. Packable. Maximum capacity of the box. Combine weight. Uh. Box six items total weight this. All can pack into the box box constructor oh. Box add. This get a weight isn't it? Wait s the city have weight? Oh well all city is two zero point one. Total weight. Oh dear. List of packable. Uh this. Nice. Six item. Total weight. Get opens. Packable. Shit what do you want hm? Um. Um list add. A um. Append a specified element to the end of the list. List support this operation with place mutation. Refuse to add no impose restriction and type this classes move. And support operation exception class cast exception no pointer. Class cast prevents okay if the add operation is not supported by this list. No pointer if this specified elements no and this list does not permit no illegal argument if some if some property of this element prevent it from being added. Okay. We should add pack. Shit. Pack. Uh that's it I think. The method could also determine value object variable however we are producing situation. Object variable. What? Of an object variable. Of an object variable. Think, think. Ready? Python M M M O C. It's the same structure like uh I think it's pretty much the same as the Java one, you know. Because this is packable. And packable, this is also pack up. What? Oh shit. Hehe, my bad. Sorry, sorry, my bad. Oh come on. Stack overflow. Book? Oh shit. What am I doing? Oh my dear good lord, oh my god. What? Two string does not return the correct string. C D. Oh crap. Oh shit. Okay, these are artists. Hehe, I'm so dumb man. Gosh. Interface at return type, uh huh. Factory can be asked to construct different objects that implement the packable. We need write empty constructor we have parameters. Cool. Packable produce a new a random object. Use here we use draw and random number. New random. Mm, it can be return type right here. Mm. It's a class packer. Packer that's that gives a lot about the things packer defines. Defined. Factory which use create things is a factory. Then we have a public p packer. Box give a bunch of things. Reduce and add and then what is that for? Okay, I okay, get it. Box and we give return the box carry a lot of some things that create by this factory. Okay. Because packer does not know the class implemented very many connect new class without change the packer. And new classes. Okay, the next example create new class in my package chocolate bar. Mm-hmm. The factory changed. According addition the packer works without changes. Class packer works without changes. With the updated version of factory. Uh wait, oh wait what? Oh yeah, okay, cool. Polymorphism, we talk about polymorphism? To help work together with interfaces. Cool, so. What? Oh at least fifty words. Red reducing dependencies between classes. Using the interfaces in program enables reducing events in new classes. Packer doesn't have going package. That's all the interface. Oh, it makes it possible to but it's more this is adding new packable classes does infect with the classes that use the packer class. Ooh, nice. Reducing the dependencies between classes. That is so cool. Built-in interfaces. Offers a considerable amount of built-in interfaces. Here we get familiar with four commonly used interface. List map set and collection. Ooh, it's so cool, I like it, I like it. Oh my god, so cool. The list interface was oh my god, it is oh. Is I have already opened it. In order collection, this interface precise control over the list you mean can insert it. Insert a main interface index search every list and set duplicate. There's a pair and multiple no element at all. It's not inconceivable that someone might wish impact this come. During reception, during certain expect usage to be rare. Hmm, cool. There's a face additional stipulation, oh goodness, I don't know what is it. Oh condition or requirement that specify your yeah. Beyond those specify collection. In the collection in face contract where and after what? Oh. Wait. Oh. Really? Implementing classes. But how about implementing? Oh wait, yes, oh. Here yeah, list set map or no map? Hmm, and what? And col oh yeah. I wanna see map. Mm, on the contract. Is an agreement. It Java programming language. Wait, he studied this book? Wait, this guy look familiar. Jim Gosling. What? No way. Other text as a whole is understandable. I mean only question is what is the contract of superclass? Is agreement. Agreement that a class expose certain methods and properties and certain behaviours. When there's including your own to this promise. You're exactly like in class promises, you agree, read on. Design by contract is started technique. Make sure high quality of guarantee and everyone to simple presentation. Do you see? Interface, the contract specifies what that component expect of clients and the client can expect of it. Wow. Very cool. Okay, let's do a list. If we have a four method, for propositional that carries uh okay. Is typically preferable to indexing through it. 排列 over them. The list interface provide a special area called list iterator. Ooh. Does allow element insertion and replacement. And bidirectional gases in addition. A method is provided to obtain a method is provided to obtain a list iterator that start at a specified position. Method. Costs linear searches, okay? To some element extreme caution is advised. The equals and hash hash code method are no longer well defined on such a list. Makes sense. Some list implementations have restriction on element they may contain. Mm. For example some implementation prevent no element restriction on types in ineligible element through unchecked. Unchecked. I forgot what unchecked is. Okay, there's like a third time. I checked at compile time. If some code If some code then must either handle with exception oh god Checked supposed to look for ab abnormal abnormalities abnormalities is it is that how it's were announced Abnormality abnormality Example provided in a different sources I There to be well what While unchecked exceptions are supposed to look For error what the fuck is this guy doing Wow Check exception needs to be handled by a caller unchecked exception Exceptional situation you are managing Checked Must be throws unchecked Other Really At runtime that disrupt Are checked at compile time But occurs For some code it throws a check then method be the other hand away That was using a throws checked exception can be fully checked or partially checked Any check exception is a subclass of exception My young Slovakian Exception we throws we need you try catch I O exception is checked exception Propository Import java dot I O dot star They are not checked at compile time It compiles from Is an un unchecked Here we are divided by zero In short unchecked or runtime session that not required to card clear Include all sub-classes Of runtime exception class as well as error class and your subclasses Wait a minute Wait a minute give it how you live it Ten toes in and we're standing for business kind of big stepper underground method Top-notch holes Not the lesser Wait am I recording Yes Phew that are not recording In short unchecked and check including also class of runtime exception wait a minute Run time with no pointer exceptions To hide the check exception within an unchecked one Wrap the checked within unchecked one In unchecked Ch around like The checked it is not a check Oh wrapped it checked within unchecked one What Okay I don't understand anything let's read this stack overflow answer Check needs to be handled by caller Yes unchecked exception duh yes Okay exceptional situation you are managing validation method checkability Then you know calling my check validation exception and display errors user There should be a check exception or those Can they can recover and real version even No fire the color the one and started down the color must recover and easy to be routing a message There should be a checked it's crucial The caller try recover don't just let the arrow to break the program flow That should not happen and I shouldn't break the program You know program error division by zero no pointer wrong with API Either state operation not supported a hard way crash in my situation not recoverable Uh or doomsday In those case no handle step reach the most outer block of the code display user No pointer there's a bug need to be fixed already index out of bounds another bug And so on Sense it denote the bug in your program There is a reco unrecoverable error So what's the point raising a runtime session only the appropriate status message Order repression as express exception that you trapped error does a brush up work and let the program resume And secondly recover from a check What exactly do you mean recover really the crash G V M makes to run There's some out memory didn't stop thread not requiring additional memory Was a reference or free later in program if continue work runtime Run time session need this session usually don't can't handle If you if you want feel free for example design special computer times Mount new chips into machine I recover I mean it's near like this call method Which sends some message to a remote computer Remote computer via socket drop tempo temporarily America trying to get a couple of times Okay like in the in these case I usually put Cash block what does it need throws cause Memento I know the movie Memento where I don't really know what it means A reminder souvenir That bug a check exception force programmer do one thing catch and handle Unless it's any passed over declaring throws Unchecked How come which is checked has runtime exception The subclassic double error is unchecked If there are runtime it is treated as unchecked Otherwise gonna refuse to compile to the twelve of its type deception Whoa throwing undeclared check exception Uh I don't see anything Do I need to have V P N on Oh I felt him so bad but I don't have enough reputation For G M V M there's no actually difference between checking unchecked Yeah